Good evening and welcome to the May 8th.
Seventh.
Seventh meeting. You nodded yes. Meeting of the Dover Sherburne Regional School Committee. My name is Judy Miller and I call this meeting to order at 6:23 PM. We are pleased to hold this open meeting at the Dover Sherburne Middle School this evening and are also live streaming with DSC TV. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. And the first order of business is community comments. I see no one here. Is there anyone, no one online? Good, so, well, I didn't mean good like that, but, so we can move on. Esther, you're up.
Hello, I'm Mr. Slayman's school rep. The student council is planning for teacher appreciation day, which is May 23rd. And prior to that, we're doing sticky notes at the library, which is annual, where students, there's a table there where the custodians place and there's a subcommittee where students go there, write nice things about teachers and we plan to fill in all of the windows at the library, in front of the library. And then there's already banners out there for teachers when they come in and drive, like, "We appreciate you, you're the greatest teachers." And we're also recognizing new teachers this year, as always, and we're also recognizing IT. We're giving them flowers and gift cards. And then, there's three teachers retiring this year. That's Mr. Hickey, Ms. Lee, and Ms. Moran. And we're giving them plagues. And then, they're also gonna have some students speak for them, and we're gonna also have the chorus perform and the jazz band as well. And then after that, there's class elections at the end of May, where they already gave out the sign up sheets and everything. Everything is due on the 20th, and then people who wanna run for office, they're gonna speak in front of everyone.
Great.
Yeah. And then before that, in March, I think, yeah, in March, we had a successful blood drive, which we gained, we had 40 pints of blood.
That's incredible.
Yeah. We also had food and water and places to rest for the students who donated, which were 16 and above and met the criteria based on their body portions. And then lastly, this was all back in December, but our town meetings, we met with Mr. Smith and we talked to him about technology, food, flex, and, yes, that's it. And we made some changes to that. For example, we shifted flex hours when students can flex into flex, like at 3:38 and not 3:36. And, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. That was, I love the idea of the sticky notes. That's really terrific. Really creative. Comments?
Just had a quick question. You mentioned the flex, the flex time. How was that adjustment? How did that affect you guys?
So, last period is six period, which ends at about like 2:36. And then, some teachers don't want kids to have their phone around, or there's like a motel where you put your phone in, so you don't have enough time to flex into like going to help a teacher, or actually just somewhere where you wanna finish a project. So, switching the hour would mean like, the students would have time to get their phone and then flex in or open their computers.
And, so I had a similar question, because I'm just starting to understand this from my sophomore son, that if you, if you want to go into a different flex block, it's all online.
Yeah.
So they sign in on their phone to a different, so it's that way, I mean, they have an app. Two extra minutes to do that.
I think it was, it used, it closed at around 30, but then Mr. O'Meara switched it, like, a lot.
Yeah. So kids are feeling like they have a little more.
Yeah. But there's also teachers who would like flex you in even if you didn't sign up.
Yeah. Yeah.
See, you got to choose if you wanna go work with a teacher, you get to say, "Oh, I wanna work with this group of students, we'll meet in this room," or if a teacher wants to meet with you, they can flex you into their room.
There's also clubs that you sign up for and then like.
Yeah, no, that makes sense.
Great. Other questions, comments?
Thank you so much. Thank you for everything you've done this year. It's been awesome. That's great. Appreciate your updates.
I'm pretty sure Cody Ting will run, and I think he's gonna be the next school rep.
All right. Well, thank you.
Terrific. Thank you so much.
Thank you for all your work and your effort.
You're welcome to stay, or we know how busy our DS teams are, so don't feel obligated.
You actually have to leave.
Sorry, thank you.
I can understand. Thanks so much.
Have a nice day, everyone. Thank you, Esther.
Beth?
All right. Just a few updates. We hosted the Challenge Success Conference two weeks ago. We had nine visiting schools and our colleagues from Stanford flew out here. Anne joined me that day, as well as some other educators and parents. It was a great day. We got to showcase all the work that we've done in a decade. I think when we explained the work that we've done, we did, the other teams started to sweat, and then we had to remind them that we've been doing this for 10 years, and then they started to breathe again, because they're in their first or second year. But it was a great opportunity to show all the work that we've done around adjusting homework and assessments and start times and mindfulness and playtime, you know, as a K-12 district. And I also think on the flip side of that, we shared out, you know, something that we're proud of. We shared our nine best practices as a DS team and said, you know, when you get past homework and assessments and start time, you can really start to engage kids in learning, and this is how we're approaching it. But as we went to the other tables of some of the newer teams, it was a reminder of our roots, right? And the importance of student voice, and we need to go back to that, and the importance of looking at data. So we had just done the Challenge Success survey in the middle of high school, so we got to hear from the new teams, how they were analyzing data, and it was a reminder that we really need to take the time, slow down, and look at the data, both the teachers and the kids, so that we can see where we're at and where we need to go. So that was great. We had the Relay for Life on Friday, that was a great event. We had food, face painting, music. It was fabulous. So thank you to our high school students for organizing that. The Jungle Book went off without a hitch. The costumes were amazing. So clever, so creative, and we had, you know, our high school students helping with that, so that was a great collaboration between the two schools. Unit B negotiations continue. So thank you to Mark Keely, who is our chair of the committee, and Kate Potter for serving on the negotiation teams. We continue to hire. And I am blessed, because all of the hard work happens with the committees, where they do all the screenings, and they make all the recommendations, and they watch all the model lessons, and then I get to meet the finalists, and they just have this amazing conversation about their background and their vision for teaching, and it's kind of like being in an oasis for, you know, 20 minutes when they get to meet with the candidates. So I'm so excited about those people that we're hiring. And both the Dover and Sherburne Town meetings have come and gone, and so the budgets have been approved, the process, and now we're just awaiting the votes in the next couple weeks. So good news there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions?
I knew you briefly mentioned slowing down and looking at the data from Challenge Success, and I also recall a few months ago, talking about a system for like cross referencing and getting data from multiple sources. Could this be put into that same system?
Yes, absolutely. Yep. Along with Metro West and Panorama and all those things. Yep.
Other questions?
Will we hear the results of the survey in some form?
Yes, yeah, we still need to dig through it ourselves, but absolutely, we'll be sharing out those results.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
The good news, sneak preview, is that our kids are getting more sleep.
Can I tell you something? That makes me so happy. You have no idea, 'cause I was here for that torture. Oh my God, that's, oh my God, that's marvelous.
Science doesn't lie.
No, it doesn't. That is great. Oh, thank you. Dawn?
Yes. Would you like to? Yes. Start off with a few financial reports. So you have your work report in the packet, and again, I always appreciate Colleen being your signatory, and I left you your folder of work to do. In the monthly report, you have your statements as of April 30th, and this is the time of year where we start doing our projections of E and D, which comes into play tonight as well, where we talk about capital. So there's a lot of this is intermingled, so we'll talk about some of it, but then we'll hit some other parts when we get to those items on the agenda. Remember that I highlight in bold any new language that's changed from your status of appropriations or in the revenue. So the revenue where it's all, no bold. When we get down to the operating expenditures, you will notice that I highlighted in the first paragraph that we continue to have several staff members out on leave and long-term substitutes are brought in. I highlighted that because you sort of see that our substitute line item is continuing to grow in a negative variance, but it is really based on just unexpected leaves that we're encountering that have continued throughout the year. And then, so, just if you think about it, we're have staff members on leave who we're paying, and then we have to pay the substitutes to come in and backfill them. So that creates that sort of negative variance in the financial statements. In addition, on the expenditure side, you will now see a negative variance in our maintenance of buildings. We've had a couple of extensive, unexpected repairs come up, and there'll be one in particular that I will talk about when we get to capital. But, and I preface that by saying, given the age of our equipment right now, it's not unexpected to have these replacements. As you start doing repairs now, it's sort of more of the, not just small parts, but larger repair. So we're hitting the 2022 mark on some of these. The equipment still has useful life, but there's just, as you all know, how you have to make repairs to things at home, we're seeing a little bit more of an uptick on that. And we probably will see that continue until we start actually doing full replacements of these items. But that did swing from a, okay, you know, there's some money left into a negative, so I wanted to highlight that. I think that is it on the financial statements. Any questions on that before I just sort of hit a few other things? So the projected E and D, you will be able to take a look at that, and if you take your revenue statement and then your expenditure statement, you'll see where we bring in the excess revenues and our expected little bit savings that's still remaining in the budget, and that starts your roll forward for E and D. Keep in mind that we've already approved $230,000 to be applied to the fiscal year 25 budget. And when we get to capital, you'll see that we're requesting $655,000 to be voted this evening to cover multiple of capital items. That will also be a negative or reduction in your E and D. And we'll talk about that when we get to capital. Just on wrap up, the, our end of the year audit was completed and filed with the state, with DUCY. Our auditors have given us the draft financial statements that we are proofing and doing our piece of the work, and we're scheduled to present the financial statements to the committee in June. So we'll touch back on some of this this week.
Yeah, when we get to it in the items for approval.
Exactly.
Okay, so I assume, Anne, are you here or just?
The handbook.
Yeah, that's what I figured, 'cause that's where we're at right now.
You mean, you haven't been like getting ready for this night and really getting excited for this presentation?
I have to say this, as a preface, I really love the format that you used in terms of updating the handbook. I knew it had your fingerprints all over it, 'cause it was so much better than what was you, than what has been, I don't mean to say bad things about people in the past, but it was a real, it was a real improvement. It made it so much easier to understand. Thank you.
Yeah, that was, I think I used that in the high school.
Yeah.
So I told Tracy, "I'll take this." And Tracy, our assistant principal, had some great input into this as well, so thank you for that. So before I get into that, because I'm here, because you brought up the Jungle Book and a couple of things, but the Jungle Book, the cast and crew went over on Sunday. They performed Friday and Saturday. On Sunday, they went over to Rashi to take part in the Mass Middle School Drama Festival and came home with silver, which was great. And some of our students also got specific awards for the roles they played, and then two of our students got set awards, which was great. So it was just a great weekend. I think they were exhausted on Monday, but they were all in school, so we loved that. So that was really great. We was, you know, super proud of them. And then just this Thursday is our Grade Eight CAGs Day of Service, our citizen action groups, which is such a, you know, I always heard about CAGs, 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 you know, when I was at the high school, and man, it is like, you talk about Portrait of the Graduate, some of the things that our students are, it just feels good to be sending them out on Thursday and then having them leave us in June to the world with, sort of, this has happened to them this year. So it's such a gift, it's so much an investment in time. So I'm just, you know, I think it'll be a great day, I'm really looking forward to it. So, just a little advertisement from the middle school.
I love it.
Yeah. So, sure, so the changes, they're really not huge or, you know, major, but they are, they fall into one of three categories. One is updated procedures on our end, legal language or legal recommendations, and then the last one is just clarifying or simplifying language and really reflecting how we work here. I felt that some of the language was just, it was, so we sort of clarified it. So I'll just take you through each one. So the first one is just simply our new dismissal procedures that we've been doing. We really, you know, I lived with it for a semester and thought, "I'm not sure I can live through September with how we're doing it." It was just a lot of disruptions to classes. The end of the day was really just a lot of pickups, and it was just causing a lot of disruptions. So we, at the start of second semester, put these into place, and it's been going really good. So, and I think it's hard to do something mid-year, but I think for the most part, it's been really, I'm not sure we're gonna tweak anything. So we just thought putting them in the handbook would be a good way to codify it. So that's the first one. The next one is around lockers, and that was just legal recommendation to include that language around privacy in lockers. The next one is really just a change in language, because flex block with our, we're having, we have a new schedule that's gonna be starting in September. We've had H-block at the end of our day. H-block now becomes flex block, so it's just a language change. So these are really expectations that were part of H-block, but will be now part of flex block. And I wonder if in a year, we'll be back even tweaking this more after living with flex block and living with our new schedule, so that's what that one is. The next one is really simplified language around school responses and consequences for certain behaviors. And really, this is a partial list of things that could happen, and we, you know, we certainly clarified that. And I would say in many cases, even before we go to the response that you see here, there are conversations, there are conversations, there are conversations and warnings. This is really, if we need to enforce something, this is where we go. We are really running on a restorative practice mindset here, so, but this just felt a little simpler, a little just cleaner, and if we're looking at it, this is where, you know, folks can see. So just really simplified. And then the last piece is, the last two pieces are around suspension laws and language that we need to put in place, so you can see the highlighted versions. So again, they fall into new procedures, legal recommendations, and just clarifying and simplifying language. So I'm happy to take any questions or if you need clarification at all.
Thank you, Anne. I'm glad that you don't dismiss students by letting people just call up on the phone.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, that's, that's just from a, from a safety perspective. That, I saw that, I thought, "Oh my God, that's great." And I wish someone had told me not to bring in stuff that my kids had forgotten.
It's hard not to.
Yeah, and we, I mean, we, it still happens, but we're just really trying to encourage middle school skills, and sometimes you need it. Like, we understand that, too.
In all seriousness, though, those things that you tried and teach, that responsibility like that, really helped my kids when they went to school and they were far ahead of their peers in terms of that. So I think we do do a really good job of teaching responsibility for education. Other questions?
I had a question about flex block, and I might be confusing this with the high school.
Absolutely.
Are they allowed to sign into the library or art or music?
Yep. So what will happen is they will report to their flex block room, and flex block will happen three afternoons, Monday through Friday. The first 10 minutes, and we've been doing this in eight o'clock this year, and it's been a great little shift for the whole school, the first 10 minutes are screen-free. Students can independent read, they can do paper-based work, they can take some time to organize themselves. From there, they may have a pass to go see a teacher for extra help. They may sign out for art lab, music lab, tech lab, you know, depend gym, open gym. So that's when, that will happen during that. So they're able to sign out with passes and they, you know, many students use it to get homework done. It is a really, it's become this time that students get homework done, they're busy after school, so it can be one of many things, so.
No, that's great, but they still have the opportunity to go to music or art.
Yep.
That's great.
Yep, for sure.
Other questions? No? Thank you. It's really, what a good job.
Yeah. Well done.
We're getting there. Every, I mean, every year you find something else.
Right. So that's our first read, and then you'll vote on it?
And Anne, it's such a good job cleaning up the high school handbook that this year they have no changes.
Yeah.
Right, yeah. Nothing to it.
Anne, thank you so much.
Thanks, folks. Great to see everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
You too.
Don's position? Yeah, so this is, items for discussion, really just information. John LaFleche, our treasurer, who's been with us for four years, remember, he came to us as a retired superintendent, is cutting back on all his jobs he has in retirement, and he will be leaving us on June 30th, which is sad. We've got a great sort of routine going. He's been fabulous. I will have to highlight that, you know, his oversight on our investments and cash management. I know interest rates are good in the market right now, but just him moving our funds to a different type of bank, our investment vehicle, has yielded us wonderful returns. So that, you know, that's not easy to do, to do move all that. He, you know, supported us when we got our P-card, our credit card, so we're up and running with that. So I am very grateful for his, his work with us for the last four years. And I enjoyed him, too, 'cause he was a superintendent, so he was a great person to sort of like, for me, to bounce things off, 'cause he has both perspectives. So we have posted for the position. I did request if there'd be someone from the school committee to join me and probably some of the other members of the business office in interviews, 'cause it's nice to have the school committee. It really is a position that is actually overseen sort of by the school committee, to join in that, and we hope to be able to bring forward or be close to bring forward a new treasurer for you to appoint for next year at your June meeting. That's what we're striving for.
So you, do you need us to appoint someone?
No, just, you can just tell me who's interested in being a part of it.
Do you want to take that on?
I think so. Do you know what?
I'm not do it. I'm just saying, figure out, figure out who should do it.
Yeah, well, it just got posted, so I would say that I was gonna hold the posting open for two weeks, so we're probably looking at about like the, that last week of May. It's not an extensive, we usually just do two interviews and check references. I will, I'll be honest, most of these treasurers come with really good backgrounds, because they might be doing multiple treasurer positions, and then I have, I have knowledgeable people on the outside that I run people by, to make sure that we're, we're gonna come up with a good candidate. So it's very, it's like, last go around, I think we interviewed three people, so it's not a huge time commitment at all. I think Maggie.
I did it with you.
Yeah, yeah.
It was great. It was not.
And it can even be one of those things that, once we know when the interviews are gonna be happening, I can let you know, and whoever's available.
I think that would be helpful.
Yeah, I don't think you need necessarily a good expertise. I think it's just to have the representation of the school committee on, on the interview committee.
Thank you.
So more to come on that. But John will be joining us at our June meeting when we present the financial statements, so we can all thank him for his service.
Thank you, Dawn. Okay, so now we go on to items for approval, the policy manual updates. We are approving manual sections A, B, and C. This is our second read. So I'm gonna ask, do people have questions, comments, changes, before we get to the vote?
Do you want me to remind people what these were?
Yeah, it would be wonderful.
So, so Policy A is like the school district legal status, it's just kind of like how we got here and where we are, so legally how it's run. Subsection, or Policy B is the school committee operational status goals. So it defines who we are, how we operate, terms, advisory, all those things. It's a whole definition. Really, not a lot was changed in that. The main one, like in the legal status, some of the things were duplicated, if you remember, and so we went with the attorney general's definitions of things, because that seems really legal. So, the subsection C, or the Policy C, is the administration goals, and it's all about, you know, how we, what our administration is, how we define it, and everything, to deal with the superintendent, so it's pretty straightforward, and there's not a lot changed in there. The only thing we had to change in anything was when we had to deal with our, our three separate committees, 'cause most of the other ones, they, other people don't have that, we do. So that's it, and talks about contracts that we have and evaluations, which we just did, so it's all pretty straightforward. That was just minimal things. The most changing that we had was in subsections in A, 'cause these were just a match, too. We made sure our pronouns were changed, so that we used "their" and "they" instead of "him/her," that kind of thing. So that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Comments, questions? We're ready to vote. So may I have a motion to approve the changes to the policy manual sections A, B, and C?
Colleen Burks, I'm the other.
Thank you.
I'm the second.
All in favor? It would be unanimous.
Three down.
Okay. Honest to God.
A lot more to go, but three down.
The MOA healthcare, do you wanna, we talked about it, but.
Right, so just for the committee, so we brought forward this evening the memorandum of agreement for healthcare, bringing it forward three years. This will be our third memorandum of agreement, and the two provisions that are continuing on is the employer's contribution to employees who subscribe to the high deductible health plan. We will contribute $2,000 to a family and $1,000 to an individual into their HSA account. And the opt-out option, which is after someone's had healthcare, carried, subscribed to healthcare for us for two years, if they have another alternative, another spouse, or usually another spouse, that they can sign onto their insurance, and they leave our insurance, and there's an opt-out payment for $4,000 for a family and $2,000 for an individual. So those provisions, we would like to continue for the next three years. This is an agreement that is approved by the school committee and then signed off by a representative from each of our bargaining associations, but then covers any employees in Dover Sherburne. So really, all we did was change the dates, and we communicated this to employees when we opened up our open enrollment in the middle of April, telling them that we were gonna continue these as they were making their decisions, and that was gonna be brought forward to school committee for approval tonight. Our benefit fair is next Friday, so it'll be approved and all set for them as they, they make those final decisions. So looking just for you to approve the next three-year agreement.
Thanks, Dawn. Comments, questions? This is gonna be a record. Quick meeting. So, then can I have a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding with regard to the, with regard to healthcare?
Kate Potter, so move.
Matt, can I have a second?
Mark Keely, second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? And the motion is, passes unanimously.
Thank you. Judy, I have a copy here for you to sign.
Thank you. I will do that before I leave.
So now we're gonna move on to capital requests, and I think this is the biggest dollar topic this evening. So as you know, we've been talking about our big rooftop unit project that we had approved through an IMA last year for 1.2 million. With that, we agreed with both towns that we would go completely electrification, and so we quickly had looked, the equipment itself was about the same price, but then when you go into the design, further into the design process, there were some infrastructure changes that we needed to do when you cut off gas and add full electricity. As you know, too, with this project, as I was saying, we just know what price increases have taken place. So when it went out to bid, we already knew it was gonna be a little bit high. It went out to bid, and the lowest bidder was just a little over $2 million. So we had 1.2 approved for the IMA. $2 million. So we had 1.2 approved for the IMA. Um, what we did though, knowing that the pricing was escalating, we wrote the bid in such a way that we had a base bid and an alternate bid. So the base bid was four of the units and the alternate bid was three. And we did that just in case we came to a point where we couldn't even, uh, figure out how to fund that if the number got too large. So it was very fortunate that the, um, base bid came in exactly about what we have, um, approved through the town. So we were looking to be able to fund alternate one, which would get us the, the final three. So with, um, a couple of maneuverings of sort of our finances, if you remember, I've been, um, discussing that the boilers that we had approved in fiscal year '23, when we started going through more of the design process, our engineers told us that we definitely have more life in our boilers. So I've been holding that $350,000 that was previously approved, knowing that we would need additional funds for the rooftop unit. So we have that, but there's a vote tonight asking you to reallocate. Um, and then we're short about half a million dollars. So you will see that built into the new capital request, uh, for fiscal year '25. Um, so that's a half a million. That will get us to the point where we have the full price and then a little bit more for the project management to cover this project, um, in, in its entirety and get all seven units. Because there is definitely an economy of scale to do this type of work and do it once. Um, and we are, we are seeing that through the bid process. Um, I, we're very fortunate that the contractor who got the lowest bid has been, um, sort of holding to make sure we could get the funding because he does the order and he wants to order it, you know, not in piece, but all together. So they're waiting for our response back after tonight's vote to see, um, how they proceed. The next item on the, um, approval for this evening is the exterior ductwork replacement, which we talked about back in December. So that item has stayed. One of the items that moved, though, that was on your December statement were the, um, and yes, there's notated down, moved from fiscal year '25 to '26, were the, um, Aon units at the middle school. So we know that we can push those off. And we also know that from doing some initial, uh, price quotes on those, that we need to look at the type. Um, so there is some more work to do with that. And we're not seeing those units fail. So we are okay pushing that off. The next item is actually one of those things that's an emergency that has arisen. And one of the, one of the reasons why it's actually good that we actually have E and D, um, because it was an immediate thing that we have to take care of. So we had two failures in our fire suppression system. And the fire suppression system is actually what the pumps, the water that puts through our sprinkler system. Because as you know, we really don't have hydrants here that feed. Um, and it was not related, but about the same time, the control panel failed, um, and the pump seized up, a bearing threw out, so we had to have a rebuild. So there's two different repairs we're doing. The pump repair is something that we're just doing through operating because it was about 10,000 to 13,000. So that we're just running through operating. But the control panel was a large enough number that we don't really have the funds and the operating, um, budget to, uh, replace. So that's the $45,000 that you see. We're asking for E and D to cover that. Um, just to give you a little more background on that, that happened, um, during April break. Um, and because of that, we've had the fire department and the building department out here. We're sort of on a, a fire watch during the day. So we have personnel who are required to walk, um, from one end to a building to another, the upstairs and the downstairs, once an hour, um, just to make sure that everything's okay. Because the fire supre-, even though our fire control, our fire, um, alarm is working, part of that system is the suppression. If that's failed, then they make us do fire watch. So, um, all the parts have been delivered and we're hoping by the end of this week that we'll be back up and running. Um, but that is like an unexpected. And I, I will say that, um, it's helpful to have some of the, sort of the town fire personnel here because they do know a lot of history of the building. And they remember that some of the decisions that were made during the renovation, we were sort of looking, you're always looking to cut cost. And we went with some vendors, obviously the lower cost. The issue with this fire control panel is that it's not supported anymore. So there were no way to get parts. Um, so that's why we're doing a complete replacement. So, but that's town people sort of giving us that information. So it's nothing that, you know, we didn't have that decision-making process. Um, so that is sort of where we are. So with that, um, the total is 655,000, which we're bringing forward for you to vote, um, this evening. And it's a two-part vote because you're voting for that from E and D and then the reallocation or reappraisal of the 350,000, um, that was, um, set aside for the boilers. So I know that was a lot. But if anyone has any questions?
I have a question and it's probably explained on the sheet right side.
Oh, yeah.
So my apologies because I, even though I did read it, I can't actually.
Yeah.
See it, which is my problem. So the, moving the boiler project, um, we're just gonna move that out a couple of years because it's.
We can move it past, yeah, because they said we probably have about 10 more years.
Oh, 10 more years?
Yeah, on the boilers. So the boilers don't show up on the five-year.
Okay, good. Then I did miss it.
Yeah, yeah, no, sorry. So they said that those have, like, we are looking at the, so we were following our onsite inside that told us 20 years.
I read it before I came to the.
They came back and said that the boilers probably, we have, you know, the quality of boilers that we have and our maintenance, we probably have 10 more years.
That's great. I was reading it as like two or three.
Yeah.
Yeah, no. So that's what they're telling us. We have a report that sort of says that. So that's what we're going with. And we're pushing, um, we're pushing those off. So that's why it doesn't show up because it's not gonna hit.
Yeah, perfect. Thank you.
Yeah, in the next five years. Yeah.
That's great news.
Other questions? Comments?
The E and D is going low.
Yes. So, so we're a little bit below. So that's, so if you go back to the financial statements, you can see now the roll forward. Um, and so you start with last year's certified E and D. You take in your, um, results of operations. So those tie exactly to your financials right now. Remember, this is just a projection. Uh, we start in April. Um, so we're looking at 655,000 to be approved for capital. 230 is already being, and approved for the fiscal year '25 budget. So that will put us at like 2.76, um, instead of, and I know your 5% is the most we can have. I will say, and then I think I quoted in the memo that your policy, um, you know, recommends that you be, you know, in the 3% to 4% range. As you know, we were getting, and it was actually written up in the Sherburne annual report, we were getting a lot of pushback about how much E and D we had, which was still allowable.
Yep.
But they were looking at it as, you know, there's money that they could have us appropriate to something. Um, I'm hopeful that they will find this to be useful. Um, again, um, they, they've seen the packet and I've tried to verbally sort of just let them know that this is what's happening. Um, but I think they'll be more comfortable with us being at this number. Probably next year, as you know, we've got a lot of, we have large capital items. I see it probably is all coming from either an IMA, um, or if they ask us to, to go out and, you know, get the funding.
Yep.
By, um, you know, taking on debt. But that, any surplus that we have will then help build back up a little bit. But I don't think they want, I don't think, well, the Sherburne actually wants us to be at the 5%. And I think that's sort of that compromise that we have to be comfortable doing. I think their perspective is that if there was ever a reason why we needed something, the towns would obviously help us. I explained to them it's the timing.
Right. So that, I guess that's my question is, if we did not have the E and D available to us because we were keeping the E and D at 3% or, you know, just below, what would the procedure be right now in terms of being able to do these projects?
Right. So in this ca-, I mean, I think this is a little bit of an anomaly. Um, and as you know, as, so I explained the part about the electrification. Um, obviously the number we started without in the IMA was from an estimate from August of '22. So prices have gone up. And we also, because we're doing the electrification and we're not switching like for like, there were some other code recommend, uh, code recommendations.
I understand why it's.
Oh, yeah. So then what we would do.
What would we be doing?
Yeah. So we would, so what we probably would have to do, it'd be too late in the game. Because I did get this bid until March 27th, um, to probably go to the town. So that would be relegated, probably to have to do the base bid.
Okay.
And then we'd have to then ask for this in the coming year.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, I, I, I mean, I'm asking the question just because to me it makes the point.
Right.
That emergencies do come up.
Right.
And unexpected things do come up.
It is, right.
And good fiscal management suggests you need to have.
Right.
Some substantive.
Yeah. And I think there's so many things in this rooftop unit that has been, um, a little frustrating, right? The, the lead time on delivery has been, so we were supposed to have done this this coming summer, but we knew back in December that there was no way we were gonna be able. So this was like a very, um, there was a lot of roadblocks on every step of the way on this project. Um, and I, I do feel for it. And I did tell at Sherburne Advisory many times that I said, just wait because I think you're gonna see our E and D is gonna go down. Because we knew that this price was gonna be above what we had. Um, and I think, I feel that we've been sort of financially savvy to be able to swing it. I think it's a great use of the money. And I think I'd rather see us invest in capital with E and D like this than just to throw it towards an operating budget on an annual basis and not really have anything to show for it in the long run. So, um, yeah. So I, I do think that we have enough, um, um, respects and collaboration with the two towns that this, you know, they, the towns could theoretically, I will say, like in 45 days, tell us they don't approve of, of, of school committee using the funds this way. But we've never had that issue before. But that is their rights. Uh, but it will put us at a much more comfortable place that we won't get sort of, um, I don't wanna say berated and beat up, but, um, of not having the 5% of E and D and not being too far off the recommendation from, um, the school committee policy.
Thank you.
But, but it shows there was a reason we had a little bit more.
Yes, it helps to have, like, there is, exactly. Because it allowed us to pivot in a way to maximize this project in the most cost-effective way that we could.
Exactly. That's, that, that's, that's really great.
And we've used, um, so I think the most we've ever used, I think is almost 600 one year that we use from E and D. And I do feel like, so what a lot of school districts do, and I'm sure those of you who work in school districts, they don't wanna give a single dollar back to the town. So there's like, I'm not gonna say inappropriate, but frivolous spending towards the end of the year to spend it down. We don't operate that way. If we can put it into E and D, we can convert those unbudgeted savings to do something really good.
Right.
Um, and I think that is, I think that we should be applauded for that approach versus spending every dollar and not having anything roll into.
Yep.
E and D. So I do try to promote that, that we're very savvy and we don't spend money just to spend it because we know whatever we can save and put to E and D, we'll find a great use for it.
Yeah, it's a very, it's a very mature way, very forward-thinking way to, 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 to handle these, these.
Right, right.
Fluctuations.
Exactly.
Other questions? Comments? Okay, so Dawn has, in her fabulous way, written out the motions for me. Um, so may I have a motion to transfer $655,000 of June 30, 2023 Certified Excess and Deficiency Funds to the region's capital fund to cover costs for approved capital projects as presented?
Mark Healy, so moved.
May I have a second?
Maggie Sharon, second.
Uh, is there any discussion? All in favor? Uh, passes unanimously. Um, and the next motion is, may I have a motion to reallocate $350,000 of approved capital funding from the high school boiler project to the high school rooftop project?
Colleen Burt, so moved.
Uh, may I have a second?
Angie Johnson, second.
Um, any discussion? All in favor? Um, that was, that's unanimous as well. Okay.
Thank you.
Um, so now we go on to the EverSource gas line project easement approval.
Yeah, you never know what the light's gonna bring you. So, um, if you, if you recall, many graduations, we had the takers out there, um, with our sort of, uh, makeup, not makeup gas, but they would cut us off the main line whenever they had to do any repairs on, um, the line that goes way up. But there, there's a main gas line that goes right by there. And that's what we're teed off of. Um, it has become a nuisance and probably not the most effective way to operate. So EverSource wants to take that over from Inbridge and, uh, hook us up to the main lines in Medfield on this side. So with that, they are going to be tearing apart a junction and cutting, coming through our, I sort of use, sort of highlighted in pink what they're doing, coming into the high school parking lot and teeing off to come down right here to hook up to the middle school in Lenkwest and then go down the hallway, the front of the high school, to hook up to where the control building is. And that's where the gas line is for, um, the high school, the control building. Um, so that is something that they have, are planning on doing this summer. With that, they need school committee's approval to allow, um, them to have property on our property. So that's the easement. Um, the initial proposal that, or easement contract that came of agreement had all of you signing and all of you having to have it notarized. And so I said, can we please simplify that? Because it'll take us a year and a half, uh, to do that. So they agreed to have, um, the chair only sign, um, as long as we have the secretary certify that the committee has approved the easement and it allowed, um, the chair to be the authorized signature. So, um, I think that a, that sort of makes sense. It's gonna be better for us in the long run, um, to not have to have the stop and starts. They were really close to putting up permanent fencing out there because it was going to be a lot of interruption to our gas feed. Um, and it, and it has never been pleasant. Anytime we've had to do it, there's always been hiccups. Um, and so this will take that away, um, and put us on, uh, the Medfield side and the, the control, the little take building, outtake building, actually they're gonna come and they'll strip all of it out. And they were gonna tear it down. And I said, please don't tear it down. We're always looking for storage. Um, and so that will be another alternative. And we'll keep the fencing. So that'll be a great place to put the sailboat. So we can really tidy up that area.
Yep.
That'll take us about a year and a half, um, to get that done. But, um, we're sort of getting a building.
Yeah.
Out of it. That's actually really nice. The first time I've been in there, uh, was last week. But it, it will serve as a, as a really nice storage, um, building. So as long as we can live through that happening this summer, um, it will be, it will, it should be a, a, a great, um, change for us from that perspective. I didn't tell them that we're changing all our rooftop units to electric and not using the gas anymore. But, um, so that, you'll see that happening, um, this summer as well.
Okay. Questions?
Is there any cost to the district for this, Dawn, or is this just all, no?
Yeah.
I didn't think I saw any.
Yeah, no, there's no cost to us. It's just more of the actual additional headaches. And we did, um, put additional requirements in there for restoration to make sure that there would be, so any place where in the front of the high school that they're, um, cutting through the asphalt, they have to actually pave it from end to end so that we don't have a seam.
Oh, they will cover that.
Yeah. And any, they're trying to not go through a lot of the concrete, but any concrete pad that they go through, the whole pad will be replaced. So that was the meeting we had last Wednesday was with the restoration team to make sure they were in agreement that we.
I didn't think about that part.
Yeah, that we would not be, um, left with anything that would sort of cause us additional costs down the road. And then the, the rest, I wanted to make sure about the restoration of the, um, the building out there. So.
Great.
We hopefully, um, agreed upon all that. And they incorporated all that into the, uh, EverSource agreement that we signed.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Other comments, questions?
I just wanna say thank you for driving a hard bargain, for explaining it all so clearly to us. I feel like that is beautifully laid out. It feels so logical as well. And we're lucky to have you as a region.
Stealing through those extra steps. I wouldn't have even thought about that.
Yeah.
About the cleanup.
Yeah.
Well, when they think about, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I, that's, yeah, yeah. Only because I'm so used to being out there. You don't know how many times I've met out there with the fire department and such when they brought the temporary gas in. So, um, you know, it's, it's, it's something that we can, we're gonna gain something for it. And it's actually gonna be very beneficial to them as well. So.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, do you, do we need to do two motions or can we do one?
No, if you motion, if you approve the, um, the easement, then I, did I give you two motions?
No, but you didn't give me any. But I can, I can do it one. I can do it all in one.
Yeah, do it all in one.
Let's just, let's just approve me signing it.
Yes.
Whether we need it or not.
Right.
Okay, good. All right. So may I have a motion to approve the easement that's contained in the package in order to install a new gas line connection, um, and to, and authorization for the chair of the regional school committee to be the signatory on behalf of the committee for the purpose of signing the easement document?
Oh, yeah, I sort of did have that sentence in there. I haven't read it since Friday. So.
Yeah, I pieced it together. So.
Maggie Sharon, so moved.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Kate Potter, second.
Thank you. Uh, any discussion? All in favor? All right. Um, it's, passes unanimously.
Thank you. And Angie, I have the secretary thing for you.
I'll come over there after.
All right. All right. Um.
Do you need to go?
I do, yeah.
Oh.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
No, that's okay. Um, Denny and Dawn are going to take over my role, and, um, I just wanna say thank you, um, for all of your service. I'm gonna miss you dearly, although we are gonna see each other a lot, and likewise, thank you both.
This is your, from last month. It needs to be signed by the other people, and then.
Thank you.
I'll look after it.
Okay, sorry, but I'll let you continue. There'll be lots of kind words said at the end of this meeting, and then I will add my own after this meeting. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, all right, so now we need to, um, approve the consent items. There is a donation. I know it was from Mudge and.
There's two. Um, then the separate one that I think we, hopefully made it into the packet was the additional contribution from the sustainability task force for the two trees that you can see right out there.
Those are awesome.
They're beautiful.
Yeah, so they worked in conjunction with the Dover Tree, um, Preservation Committee, and as you know, Chicreen did some plantings as well. Um, and so they wanted to, um, uh, observe Arbor Day and sort of leave a little legacy here for themselves. So they named it Barbara, and I forget what they named, but we had our final meeting out there, um, uh, last Friday by the trees, they were all like, yeah, so it was, it was sort of fun. They actually did help. They dug, they had shovels, um, so it was, it was a great little thing.
Red buds are great.
Yeah, so it'd be a nice little addition there. If you remember, there's a lot of pine trees we had to cut down there because they were, they were dead. Um, so it's sort of nice to bring some vegetation back.
It was, uh, the donation was from Mudge, uh, the Mudge Foundation for twelve hundred dollars for the high school art department to go to Mass MoCA.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes.
We're delighted.
Yes.
We love field trips.
So we need to, um, approve those two and approve the minutes of the March fifth meeting. Did anyone have any changes to those minutes? No, okay, so can I have a motion to approve the, um, consent agenda?
Colleen Burt, second.
May I have a second?
Mark Keely, second.
Uh, all in favor? Okay, the consent agenda is approved. I have a few things of, just a very few words to say. Um, I first want to thank Maggie Sharon for her wisdom, competence, kindness, but mostly her friendship. I want to, um, thank the people of the town of Sherborne for electing me and giving me the gift of serving with all of you for the past six years. Um, I feel really proud of the things that we've accomplished. In particular, I feel really proud of our, um, the work we did during the pandemic. I think that, that it was a lot of work, and it was really good work. And, um, but mostly what I wanna say is I will miss all of you and I will miss this community. And if you can find ways to bring me back.
You will.
I, I'm serious.
Don't worry.
Yeah.
Many catering services.
Yeah, well, I'm happy to do that, but I will, I, I, I will most of all miss the community. Um, and when I, and I mean that the larger community, but our smaller community as well. Um, so thank you for allowing me to serve and serve with you all. All right, um, so there are informational items, um, which you can read in your packet. Our next meeting, your next meeting is, sorry, is June eleventh. Um, and can I have a motion to adjourn?
Just a moment. Wait, wait, before we do that, I wanna say Denny had, Denny had a memo in there about social studies. And I just wanna say, being a historic history, social studies teacher myself, I'm very excited to hear about the pilots, about the new curriculum, um, that's gonna happen in the middle school social studies curriculum. I'm delighted to see it align to all of the different states' standards and frameworks and best practices and high-quality instructional materials. And, um, I don't actually know if I really go through it, but I'm really excited to dig in and see what kids are doing, 'cause I know, um, yeah, middle school social studies is not always the most dynamic class that kids ever take, and these things are really exciting, so thank you.
So if you see an older-looking middle schooler, it's probably Maggie.
Thank you so much for doing that work. That's, that's really.
All right.
Yeah.
And we have, yes, and I will, since Superintendent Quaid's leave, I will, um, speak on her behalf, but we're thankful to Judy and Maggie for everything you've done just in the past two years I've worked in Dover Sherborne. I've appreciated the fact that both of you always think about what's best for our teachers and for our students, put them first. And I've just been there, felt very lucky to work with both of you, to feel the support that you've given. And, you know, sometimes there's hard decisions, there's a lot of noise, and I feel like you both have been resilient and just fantastic in this role, so just a small token of appreciation.
Oh, my God, thank you. All right, can I, can I tell you something? Thank you. This, I am, I, I'm going to find a really special place in my house for this. I, it like, I mean, prominently displayed, this is so lovely, oh, my God. Thank you all so much.
What, 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 what did he say?
It's not over yet, though, 'cause we worked really hard to try to embarrass both of you one at a time, so. Should we start with Maggie or Judy?
I, I say we start with Maggie. We're gonna go alphabetical order.
Okay, perfect. Um, it's like our homework assignment. On behalf of the regional school committee, I'd like to recognize and thank Maggie Sharon for her leadership, multifaceted understanding of schools, and her ability to connect with a broad range of stakeholders during her six-year tenure with the R S C. While working in a neighboring district, I met Maggie and we discovered we were both Dover residents. Her three children, a few years older than mine, thrived in the Snappers program, explored various musical endeavors, and participated in many other school programs. Over the past decade, I've appreciated hearing Maggie's stories, humor, and insights regarding parenting, work-life balance, civic engagement, and responsible, compassionate decision-making. Anyone who's spent even a short time with Maggie recognizes her deep curiosity, confidence, and caring nature. She engages fully in life and often applies her skills and conviviality to better understand and support the needs of others. It's no surprise that Maggie has been pivotal to the school committee and, by extension, the broader community throughout her six years of service. During her tenure, Maggie has helped provide guidance on COVID-related policies and practices, multiple rounds of central office searches for superintendents and assistant superintendent, and she spearheaded recent rounds of the laborious yet crucial superintendent evaluation process. In addition, Maggie has functioned as liaison to several district, school districts and, um, school organizations. So, sorry, several district and school organizations such as FOPA, CPAC, Middle School Advisory Council, and the Employee Benefits Committee. Perhaps most importantly, however, is the consistent diligence, clarity, and humanity that Maggie has brought to her work. Maggie has always kept students at the center of her decision-making, and as a result, she has gained the confidence of residents of all ages. She has researched and listened attentively to varied viewpoints and suggestions on any given topic, from student parking, ADA compliant bleachers, and library resources, to broader aspects of school culture and climate, before developing her position, or finalizing her position. Maggie has provided key leadership through a combination of a strong inner compass and an, and an ability to adapt. In short, I believe that Maggie embodies what we might all aspire to as we take on our elected positions in service to our students, families, staff, school, and the product, schools and the broader community. Maggie, I'd like to personally congratulate and thank you for your service to the school committee. I'm not sure we'll have as much fun with you no longer on board, but I hope we can retain that ability to look carefully and intentionally at all sides of an issue and see it through to its best conclusion. Best wishes to you and your family as you continue with your adventures and opportunities ahead.
I wanna try to do it in poll form, but you know, you did that to match up. So this is something that we wanted to say to Judy. Judy, tonight, the regional school committee recognizes and thanks you for your service. Judy has served this committee and community for two terms during a critical period. During this time, Judy never wavered when asked to participate in researching and understanding complex issues. With her legal background, leadership, and general empathy, she truly gave more than was asked and left us in a better place. I met Judy when our daughters were on the cheerleading team for D S H S. The girls were trying to start a cheer team from the ground up. Judy was the mom who said it was possible and hosted them to practice at her house. I knew then that she was a force that did not take no for an answer and who tried to fill a need when it arose. Flash forward a few years, and I had the privilege of serving on the same committee as Judy. What I most enjoy about Judy is her quick wit, her ability to see an issue and ask what may not be the easiest questions, and her willingness and ability to give grace and praise to those who have done the hard work. Judy is truly one of the most gracious people I know. Personally, she has been a cheerleader to me and has uplifted me when I felt overwhelmed with a task. Judy's contributions to this community, our committee, are numerous. During Judy's six years on the committee, she was a rational voice during COVID and the many meetings we had to get our students and teachers back into school. She served on the superintendent search committee and the interim superintendent search committee. Judy was a member of the start time committee, where she researched sleep and its impact on the adolescent brain. She was a contributing member to the negotiations team for teacher contracts. And when there was a student request that we look at the calendar critically to include different religions and cultures, Judy volunteered without hesitation to be a part of that investigative group. With Judy's legal background, she was the perfect person for the policy subcommittee. Who knew how many ways we can interpret a word and whether it should be in the policy? She was part of FOPA, and has always been a champion for the arts at D S. One of Judy's many talents is cooking, which we are fortunate enough to experience. When we had back-to-back meetings in the night, Judy took it upon herself to cook a very healthy meal and beat us all. She also makes the most delicious cookies. Judy's ability to truly listen and take in what is being said is a gift. She's made those who have felt unseen feel validated. She's given her time and talents and has posed tough questions when we needed to reflect. Judy contributed in normal ways and in more creative ways. She has been the voice of reason, the reason for enjoying each other's company, and she will leave a legacy of getting the job done while being caring and compassionate. Judy, we will miss you, your wit, your critical thinking, and yes, your cooking. Thank you for all that you have done for the Dover Sherborne region. Thank you for your impact on the kids in the schools, the teachers, and the constituents of your community. And finally, thank you for being a genuinely gracious and good human. We wish you all the best on your next endeavor.
Oh, my God, thank you. And I wanna say I got much more out of this than anyone else did, than any, than the community or any of you. It was really my pleasure. I, I have to tell you, it was really my pleasure. All right, let's adjourn before I start really sobbing.
No, I don't wanna say sobbing.
Do you want to? You said you did it.
I didn't, no, I didn't. Well, listen, I want everyone to be able to go home. We did such a good job with our meeting, being real.
I'll let you out the hood. You say sob all the time.
But I do wanna say before, because it is our last day, that, you know, for all of you, Dawn, you've been sitting there through three superintendents and different rotations of cast of characters. I think that, um, it's, it's been, as Judy said, something that we have gotten as much out of as hopefully we've been able to contribute. And, you know, I, I think that in today's, so many people that I talk to about working on school committee or doing things in town, today's a hard time to do that. And for each of you that we're leaving behind and for those that are joining, it's really important. Like, if people don't show up to do this work for their communities, that, those communities aren't gonna function. And I hope, my hope is that there'll always be a next generation of people who wanna come and, and work and work on behalf of students and taxpayers and families to make sure that our schools remain really strong and to be part of our community that we can be proud of, so, thank you.
I have to say the institutional knowledge that you two have from not just your kids.
We're not moving.
But I mean, whenever we were kind of at a loss, we had you two, and then we looked at Dawn and go, what, what is going, I mean, and you all can go back and you know, and so we're definitely gonna miss that.
Well, we'll be here. You all have my, you can all text me. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all, so, for the last time, um, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Maggie Sharon, so moved.
May I have a second?
Kate Potter, second.
All in favor? It's unanimous.
That's a wrap.
And we're adjourning at seventeen twenty-eight.
All right.